Okay, we will call to order the Planning Commission of the City of Lathrop Village for Tuesday, July 15th at 7:02 PM. Can we have a roll call, please, Madam Kirk?
Yes. Nordmo?
Present.
Skusel?
Present.
Disick? Stansberry? Robinson?
Present.
Hammond?
Present.
Hillman?
Present.
We have quorum.
We have quorum. Is anybody interested in making a motion to excuse absent commissioners?
I can make the motion.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
We'll stand.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could I? It's hard to say. I was looking.
You had Skusel, Nordmo, and Robinson, yeas.
Okay.
Skusel.
Thank you.
And Hammond and Hillman, nays.
Okay, thank you.
I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second. So moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and the agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the June 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Does everybody receive a copy and have a chance to review? Yes. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll motion to approve the meeting minutes from our June 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and the agenda is approved. We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes from the June 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Does everybody receive a copy and have a chance to review? Yes. Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll motion to approve the meeting minutes from our June 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to public comment. Anybody in the audience who would like to speak may speak for three minutes and...
Diane Anderson. And I'm here to offer an invitation for a little tour. Let me go into it. We know preservation of historic buildings enhances property values. And that's important because while everybody's house in America, except in the worst of slums, is going up in value with inflation, Lathrop homes are not keeping pace with Birmingham, Beverly Hills, where they once did. I monitor this on a daily basis, let me tell you. We know that the historical society is effectively defunct. It's been privatized, turned into a private club, and they're very anti-preservation. And the Historic District Commission is absent without leave. We know the schools that were once the big draw here now keep people away. So we have to ask, what do you have that you could do to make Lathrop special? And as I've said many times, what you can do is emulate places like Boston Edison and the historic districts in Detroit, historic neighborhoods. And that's what Lathrop could be if the historic district were expanded, not only the housing, which at least 90% of the housing would now cover, but the buildings along Southfield Road. Now, I've told you all, I've given you handouts, you've got the list of the buildings that should be included in this historic district because it was always supposed to be. Lathrop was mid-century modern, and it was federal-style architecture in the growth period when most of the houses went up, the 50s, 60s, 70s. And Southfield Road was the same thing, and up until the turn of the century, they talked about it like going to Colonial Williamsburg. Those buildings were so well-made that if they had been properly maintained, which they're not, you have to see the state of some of them, as I've told you before, they could really be repurposed and turned into something lovely. So I'm offering to take any one of you or all of you on a Sunday morning, that's the only time you can really go up and down Southfield Road and duck in and out, din out and out of those buildings, and give you a tour of these historic commercial buildings from the 50s and 60s that really need to be redeveloped. We've said many times, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars out there in grants for historic preservation. And so far, that's been missing in action in Lathrop. What's also been missing, as I've said, is bringing the kind of proper boutique-type things in rather than chicken places and restaurants that smell. I don't know if you saw the recent post about that horrible new gas station that has fried chicken stinking up the neighborhood, but there's a complaint online that the woman says, apparently you also have EV charging there, and it takes her over two hours and there's no toilet for her to use. That's not the kind of reputation you want for Lathrop. You want the kind of things we used to have, like when Habitat Gallery was here, a very upmarket art glass place. And that could be done, but it's going to require proper planning. You can't just turn it over to the DDA. So if you want to come along on a Sunday morning, let me know.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to old business and tabled items. First item, 6A, is zoning ordinance amendment for small-box retail discount stores.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The item before you is for the zoning amendment, proposed language for the small-box retail discount stores. We discussed this in detail, the last two planning commissions. So the only change really is within the previous discussions that explains that upon discussing the proposed amendments, the Planning Commission supported removing the requirement of dedicating a minimum of 15% of floor area or shelf space to fresh foods and vegetables. Under the Special Land Use Section of 4.23, Criterion 4 allows for the Planning Commission to consider any amount of floor area to be dedicated to fresh produce. So there's a bit of discussion about the 15% not being appropriate or just being confusing. And so by removing that, we are essentially saying that because it's a special land use request, that the Planning Commission will have the authority or the ability to establish any percentage that should be dedicated towards fresh food and vegetables. The commissioners also addressed the comments from the public hearing to say that the purpose of the ordinance amendment is to limit the proliferation of this type of use within the community, as there seemed to be some indication that there was a misunderstanding that the community, the city's not doing enough to address the concern of discount stores in the community. So the language is the same, just with that minor modification regarding the percentage of fresh fruit and vegetables. But unless you want to discuss any further details, this would be essentially ready to consider a motion to forward to City Council for adoption.
So actually, last month, the motion they did, after the, they did already make the recommendation to City Council to approve this, so this, there is no action that's required either of these ordinances tonight. The Planning Commission holds the public hearing, essentially conducts the first reading of the ordinance, and then their motion is either to recommend approval or recommend not approving to City Council. City Council will then take action on that at their next meeting. So this should appear at City Council's next, next Monday.
Is that the same for the money service, too?
Correct. Yeah, we did both of those last one.
That's right.
There were some updates that the Commission had requested, which is why I believe they were back on tonight's agenda, just so you could see those updates. But next action required is by the City Council.
Okay, so we don't need to make a motion to pull these off the table because we're not going to be taking action?
Correct. I think you're just essentially getting updates tonight on the revisions that were made based off the feedback from the commissioners last month.
Great, okay. May I ask, in our agenda packet, are these the updated versions or are these the versions we reviewed last week? I think they're the version, I'm sorry, last month. They appeared to be the same version.
They should be the updated versions. The updated is dated July 11th on both reports.
The updates are in the amend section at the end.
Depends on how you access the agenda. Because I also see updates from A, but I access the HTML versions of the agenda packet.
Oh.
So...
Yeah, so when the changes are made to the HTML version, they stay stagnant, and you have to go back to the meeting packets on MuniCode and select the most up-to-date one.
I have a copy. Would you like to see?
I think I...
No.
I'm sorry, I pulled these up earlier in the day so that they're available to me already on my browser. I'm only seeing, I'm looking at the bottom left-hand corner of the documents, and they, they're stamped 250516. Does that mean I'm reviewing dated documents?
Yeah, it's the same thing. This is what's coming up from this MuniCode website.
Here, I will upload, I'll re-upload them, so then it will reset the HTML.
Okay. Primarily why I'm asking is because, at least for me, the biggest point of concern was updating the districts in which money services businesses might exist. And as I'm reviewing what's here currently, it still indicates two different types of zones.
Yep, so that has changed also. So I just hadn't gotten to that one. But that was to restrict the use to commercial vehicular only. So that, that should be reflected once you see the letter, the updated memorandum dated July 11th.
Sure.
That's in the first paragraph.
Okay.
So that was the only change for the money service business amendment.
Okay.
So the updated versions are now live. You should be able to refresh and access the meeting packet.
It looks right now to me. Yes, thank you. I see the updated version now.
Okay, so now we're all accessing the state, the agenda packet. Does anybody have questions about the proposed ordinance language? For, this is for small-box retail discount stores.
Okay.
I do not.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the zoning ordinance for money service businesses. Kind of already touched on it, but...
Yeah, essentially, for check cashing, what's more commonly known as check cashing businesses, the discussions that we've had in the past expressing the concerns regarding predatory lending and the type of business, given that there is, the Planning Commission of the city recognizes that there is an essential function to them, but given the concerns towards safety, public safety, and just the proliferation of them, the number within the community, especially because there are existing check cashing services and businesses in the surrounding area. The proposal was to limit those within the city to both the mixed-use district as well as the vehicular, commercial vehicular districts. Our analysis presented that by doing so would limit those types of businesses within the community. With those restrictions, however, it was the Planning Commission's determination that they'd like to restrict it even further, and so we removed the mixed-use zoning district. So now the language just reflects that money service businesses are, would only be permitted with a special land use within the commercial vehicular district. So that's the only change with this updated memo.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments about the proposed ordinance language for money service businesses?
I do not.
Great, okay. All right, great. Thanks, Eric. So we'll move on to item seven, new business. This is about cryptocurrency kiosks.
Before Eric jumps in on the staff report for the currency kiosk, the decentralized currency kiosk, I'd like to say that City Gross Point Farms actually last night just passed an ordinance banning, and they kept it more broad than just Bitcoin. They kept it to virtual currency machines because there's going to be more prevalence of other types of cryptocurrencies, like Ethereum and others. So we should keep that in mind as we have the discussion.
Okay, so if I draw your attention to the memorandum, again, dated July 11th, 2025, this is just Gipps Webster acting on the request by the Planning Commission to compile some research and information based on a resident's inquiry pertaining to some reporting out of Waterford Township that there was some security concerns of a resident in Waterford that was a victim of scamming. And so the thought process or the approach in Lathrop Village was to try and see and determine if there's any regulations on Bitcoin or cryptocurrency. And so the memo before you is just kind of our summary of that. And so this is more for an open discussion. This is just more or less a fact-finding based on our limited ability and research that we have. So to start off with definitions, just to kind of help understand what it is exactly we're talking about. Cryptocurrency is a digital currency in which transactions are verified and records maintained by a decentralized system using cryptography rather than by a centralized authority. So there's no real regulations the same way that banks and financial institutions regulate financial accounts. Cryptography is the art of wiring or solving codes. So that kind of helps you understand that it's more or less an invisible thing, that the cryptography is the art of writing and solving the codes digitally. So decentralized was a big term that came up in researching. And so what that term means is to be controlled by several local offices or authorities rather than one single one. So the first bit of information under the Oswego University of New York, I thought that this was a good synopsis of the way that they described cryptocurrency and the like. They state that crypto is a form of digital currency that can be used for internet-based electronic payments or as a store of value. The idea of digital cash isn't new, given that credit cards, PayPal, Venmo, and other payment methods permit easy, traceable electronic transactions have been in use in the past. Cryptocurrency differs from other digital transactions primarily through a decentralized nature and use of blockchain technology. Unlike traditional digital transactions that are managed by banks or payment processors, cryptocurrencies operate on a peer-to-peer network secured by cryptography and recorded on a public, transparent blockchain. So then, kind of scratching your head, well, what does that all mean and what's a blockchain? So blockchain technology is a shared, immutable, meaning it can't be tampered with, ledger that records transactions in a secure and transparent way. It's decentralized system where data is stored in blocks that are linked together in a chain, making it difficult to alter or tamper with past records. This technology is often associated with cryptocurrencies like Bitcoin, but it has potential applications in various industries beyond finance. And then more specifically, Bitcoin was the first cryptocurrency, and so a lot of the times when people refer to Bitcoin, they're just talking about cryptocurrency. But more specifically, Bitcoin is the first decentralized cri- cri- cryptocurrency that was established. And it was based on a free market, that being supply and demand ideology from back in 2008 is when it got its start. So in regards to safety concerns, the legal status of Bitcoin varies substantially from one jurisdiction to another. Because its decentralized nature and its global presence, regulating Bitcoin can be difficult. However, the use of Bitcoin can be criminalized, and shutting down exchanges and the peer-to-peer economy in a given country would constitute a de facto ban. The use of Bitcoin by criminals has attracted the attention of financial regulators, legislative bodies, and law enforcement. Nobel Prize-winning economist Joseph Stiglitz says that Bitcoins' anonymity encourages money laundering and other crimes. And I think that that's what the concern was by the resident who spoke the other month using the Waterford Township example in reference. This is the main justification behind Bitcoin bans. As of November 2021, nine countries applied for an absolute ban: Algeria, Bangladesh, China, Egypt, Iraq, Morocco, Nepal, Qatar, and Tunisia. And then here we have some research pertaining to the Waterford example that was given, the situation that occurred in Waterford. There's actually, the text is linked, so you can watch a report on it from the local media. But had it not been for the employee of the gas station recognizing that an elderly lady had walked in with a large amount of cash, there may have been more damage done than just the $7,000 that she received back out of the $16,000 that she was willing to deposit under a fraudulent, fraudulent account. So with the state of Michigan, there was no finding of any instances of a codified regulation in the state, and there are no real statewide guidelines or regulations regarding crypto ATMs. So it seemingly continues to be a gray area policy-wise in terms of implementing something with a little bit more teeth. But in other states, we found that Omaha, Nebraska recently passed an ordinance requiring all crypto ATMs to have a written warning to alert users of potential fraud or scam risks. And then within Spokane, Washington, that was the first evidence that we found where crypto is banned outright. So there's state-by-state municipal, municipality by municipality that has addressed the concern, most of which have voiced that it's the safety concern or the public health, safety, and Under the Spokane example, their scope and purpose within their ordinance states that virtual currency kiosks are frequently used by criminals to manipulate, intimidate, and threaten victims into using those kiosks to send cash. Without stronger federal, state, or local regulations, there is no way to stop criminals from using virtual currency kiosks to victimize members of the community. This chapter prohibits the placement and use of virtual currency kiosks within the city as necessary and appropriate to prevent dangers to public health and safety and to preserve public morality, health, peace, and good order within city limits. So that, again, to circle back, goes back to the whole decentralized nature of cryptocurrency because one would potentially argue that, you know, we've had ATM machines which deal with credit cards, ATM debit cards for quite some time, so we've been dealing with digital transactions. But because of the decentralized nature of cryptocurrency, I think that that may be where there's the weakened link, so to speak, where there may be more vulnerabilities with crypto than your standard, you know, ATM transactions that we're used to. But that's essentially the basis of our findings. I don't know how easy it would be to regulate at this point in time, so that's open for discussion if it is something that the Planning Commission wanted to look further into. But overall, I think there is a valid concern out there nationwide regarding the safety and the various actions that crypto has associated with it, and of course, just the uncertainty of what it even is. So, you know, when you think back to the Waterford example, you know, to interview the lady who was being scammed, to ask her, what is it that you know about crypto that, you know, encouraged you or motivated you to deposit $16,000 to a total stranger within this, you know, electronic unit or kiosk? So the concern is valid. You know, it is something that the Planning Commission can discuss further, but at this point in time, I'd be willing to hear more of your feedback to get a better understanding for what direction we want to go in, so.
One of the biggest concerns is that once money is deposited and it goes on to the digital ledger of cryptocurrencies, if it's Bitcoin or any other type of cryptocurrency, it can then move around and it can't be tracked. So once the money's gone, it's gone. And there has been, according to the FBI, $5.6 billion scam from individuals using cryptocurrencies. And with the advancement of generative AI, there can be replication of voices, even video and audio of loved ones. And especially with Lathrop Village being a community that skews older, it could be used in a way to scam individuals. I believe in the Spokane example, there was someone who called, pretending to be a grandson of some, of a grandparent, and that pressure and that pushing on the nerve of a loved one using that can really get someone motivated. And once that money's deposited, it can't come back. It's gone. And it's only going to be something that becomes more of an issue as time goes on, and it's going to be something that is going to be difficult to regulate. And as Eric said, with other type of kiosk and ATMs that we've had in the past, with using debit cards or depositing checks, those are backed. FDIC, there's other protections that banks have for individuals who do get scammed for using an invalid ATM. But when it comes to cryptocurrencies at this time, it is not backed. So unlike working with a bank to get your money back from a fraudulent ATM that took money from your debit account, if you put cash into a Bitcoin kiosk and it is stolen, then there is no way to get that back. There is no overall authority who you can go to to get, to get made even for the scam. And we've looked, there are none in the city, but it is not, does not take much of a ride to get to one.
So what are the parameters of what we can do? It seems like we could regulate where they might be able to be, but City Council would have to be the ones that would say it wouldn't be allowed within the city limits. Is that, I mean, I'm trying to figure out what we have the authority, for lack of a better word, to do?
So I can answer that question. I think that specifically this body has the authority to regulate the location.
Location.
Similar to what Gross Point Farms did, is they didn't actually prohibit them in the city Gross Point Farms. They required that they be registered, apply, the owner of the ATM, register the ATM with the city, apply for a business license, provide mooring signage similar to what Austin has referenced about the lack of FDIC insurance or the ability to reap losses from that machine. They didn't go to the extent of prohibiting them from existing within the city. I would be, I would, if Council was interested in doing that, I would caution them from taking that step as well. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot, unfortunately, there are a lot of scams that are out there that are not necessarily limited to cryptocurrency. We could get Lieutenant Zhang up here, and I'm sure he could run this down the list, but, you know, people have fallen victim to exactly what you've described, impersonating a loved one or a family member requesting gift cards be sent, prepaid Visa cards. Those are all opportunities for criminals to take money and the individual that's, for the most part, they're out that cash. Those are not insured forms of payment. And so I personally know someone that her brother fell for one of these cryptocurrency scams, and it might have been in Waterford. He might have been lying behind this elderly woman. He's not an elderly man, but he was pumping the machine full of cash, you know, thinking that he was going to acquire this interest in this business that was completely fictitious. So it happens to young, it happens to old. I don't know that regulating the location or outright prohibiting them is going to stop those crimes. I think personally, I would lean more towards the registration and the signage requirements so that people can become educated about the risks. I think that would go a long way to protecting your citizens and show that you're on the cutting edge, the forefront of new technology. You're not trying to restrict or limit it, but you're wanting to make people aware of it and doing, doing what you can within your authority to do that.
And so that's what we would have the authority to at least propose?
Correct.
If I might, Commissioner Skusel, can I ask a follow-up question?
You go right ahead.
To be perfectly clear, the, what happened in Gross Point Farms was an act of its Planning Commission or an act of its City Council? Do we know?
I believe it was an act of City Council.
City Council.
Okay.
But a recommendation could be made from this body and passed on to city council.
Okay.
Yeah, because the language would be part of the zoning ordinance, it's not the city.
Well, it could, you could, you could include specific definitions of what cryptocurrency kiosks are, and then you could identify districts where you'd like to see them, similar to what you've done with other, you know, money service business, although these are not standalone organizations, but they, they are typically, as Eric indicated, privately operated, they're not, you know, someone approaches a gas station and says, I'd like to put an ATM machine in, that's, you know, the gas station doesn't necessarily own that ATM, it's, you know, whoever company owns that is running that, so. And then from the city standpoint, general ordinance would could, would add that to the type of business, specifically require them to be, to be licensed and provide that signage as indicated.
If I may, the goal is to limit access for vulnerable residents to these types of machines. And I, I would venture to say, I don't think the vulnerability started with the machine itself, it started more than likely with a phone call that said, go to this machine, and this is where you could put money in. And if they didn't go to that machine, they would have gone to another one or somewhere in a surrounding area. I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit here. We have a mix in Lathrow, young, old, retired, employed, and there are different types of fungible currencies, NFTs, KRP, Bitcoin, that utilize some of these kiosks. You have that, that type of access online as well. And as we are looking at and moving toward, and let me just say, I don't like Bitcoin at all, period. I agree with everything that you're saying. But for a young, a younger couple that's wanting to move into this, this area, you know, how, how do we do our banking if we're that couple that utilizes this type of currency? If we don't have access to it? We, we don't want to cut ourselves off from new residents and, and the, the appeal of the neighborhood because we don't have all of the access that people may need. I agree with the registration and the signage and the licensing of these machines, and I agree that they may need to be limited to a certain specific area where they can be monitored better.
Joe, I think you hit on a lot of really good points right there, and especially the, the first one, that it didn't begin at the machine, began with a phone call or some type of initiation to begin that process. And I think having a registration with required signage about scams could potentially stop someone from actually putting money into the machine. And also, as you said, that it's, they're in the area, so if our residents are going to utilize them, they might as well use, utilize them here in the city. And also, we should have anybody using them in our city, either a resident or someone passing through, to have some type of protection and some type of awareness that there is a, a potential scam that could be occurring, and it could stop them in their tracks and have them just for a few moments, think about it a little deeper.
Absolutely. It's sort of like drinking McDonald's coffee, the caution sign is on the cup.
Yeah.
But to that point, the caution signs on the cup, I don't know about you, but I don't read what's on my coffee cup. So if we were gonna do something like recommending, I think recommending registration is a good idea, that way the city has awareness of where these kiosks reside. The signage needs to be bold and, you know, big words, large font, like different colors, you know, very easy to, to see without intruding on, you know, the business owner's ability to put other products or other signage up as well.
And if this is the machine that the business owner is recommending and in their business, does the business owner bear any responsibility for any of the losses for the use of their machine? That's another question to ask.
That is a good question, especially with it being such a still relatively new scam. Scott, are you familiar with any type of?
To my, my understanding, my knowledge is that they, they don't have any responsibility, I mean, beyond like the machine needing your card or something like that. Because the transactions that you're, as Austin pointed out, the transaction that you're participating in, it's not going through a centralized, regulated, you know, it's not going through your bank or there's a, a record of it that you, that you could call your bank in the morning and say, hey, you know, I think someone scammed me that, you know, this money that I, you know, deposited $500 and they took $5,000 out, or whatever, whatever the case may be. So I don't see any scenario under where the, the business owner would necessarily be liable for that because that, they didn't make you take that action.
True.
But I, I do think there's benefit to, to knowing who owns the machine, who operates the machine, so that there's some, you know, there's some accountability for, for at least maintaining the signage and making sure that the machines are good operating condition.
Yeah, I agree, that's the, the business owner's responsibility would be just complying with the ordinance, which says you have to have the sign, and if they don't, then they're gonna be subject to a fine.
I think that the scariest part of that is, the machines that we use, some of them have Bitcoin and Kearns, it, it's a dual machine. So if you accidentally hit the wrong button, then you're out there in the stratosphere.
You mentioned that search results indicate kiosks can be found within close proximity beyond the boundaries of the city. Do you know more specifically about where they might be in close proximity to the city?
So that was just a Google search, quite honestly. Yeah, so I looked at where the city boundaries were, and there was none within, but they're kind of like how we did the analysis for the ordinance amendments. There was some within close proximity. So in my mind, if that is accurate information, the city is, is served by access to the kiosks.
They're at the north and south boundary of the city, they're at Southfield and Lincoln and Southfield and 12 Mile. I, just a couple hours ago, went and stopped in the BP to see if they had one, they do not, but I continued on to get gas at 8 Mile and Southfield, and that gas station did have one. So they are within close proximity.
So is it fair to assume, we may not know, most of these machines are located within a business like a gas station or a convenience store? They're not necessarily like carved into the wall of a strip mall as kind of a standalone?
Yeah, it seems like right now their primary location seems to be in gas stations and party stores, not so much like the typical kiosks we would expect if you were using your bank or, or credit unions ATM.
Sure, and to our knowledge, that's likely coincidental because there, by your research, there's not a lot of noise in the Michigan universe about ordinances requiring them to be in certain places like that.
There's not, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay, and also, one point of clarification. I know the document is a few days old, and this incidence out of Gross Point is very new. The paragraph that talks about how there's simply no finding of any instances of codified regulation in Michigan, this is updated now, right, to, I mean, I know it's not updated in the document, but in theory, it's updated based on this Gross Point ordinance.
Yeah, and it just goes to show the continued evolution, I think, of community awareness of this sort of thing. And so it kind of hits close to home, being that it's, you know, suburban community just down the way. That is also recognizing the same type of security concerns or, you know, public safety and public awareness. Because ultimately, you know, if, if people are in fact scammed by this, that's occurring within your community, it's a crime that's occurring, you know, at home, so to speak.
Sure, and it doesn't sound like the police department of the township of Waterford spent no time sorting out the mess that this incident created. So I suppose there is a legitimate concern for a draw on our public safety resources if these machines go kind of unregulated to every extent.
And I think police departments are in a difficult position right now because there's not many resources or authorities to turn to when these type of crimes occur. It's more because of the ideology about, about it being decentralized, it results in it being difficult to regulate and difficult to backtrack once a transaction's begun.
Sure.
That being said, to Tim's point, if, if somebody reports a crime, right, even if there is no way to enforce some sort of penalty or identify the perpetrator, it's still a drain on public, sort of, public safety resources.
Over $5 billion so far has been scammed.
$5 billion, but then who knows how many man-hours of detective resources used to investigate.
Sure. Well, thank you for putting time into this. Thank you to Commissioner Hammond for advocating its placement on the agenda.
That was Mr. Tara's public comment that triggered that whole thing.
Yeah, that would be my next point, is I really appreciate that this agenda item has found its way to us by way of public input, I really appreciate that. I would be curious, especially considering how hot off the press it is, for us to perhaps next meeting review collectively something like the Gross Point ordinance, which is, I would imagine for most of us feels more relevant than examples out of Nebraska or Washington State. I think it's a worthwhile discussion to keep having. And it's timely considering we've just spent so much time over the course of our last few meetings talking about this commission's, this city's interest in helping preserve the financial safety of our residents by way of the money services businesses ordinance. So I would advocate for us to continue this conversation next meeting.
And one last point bouncing off of what Joe said, that we are trying to attract a, a larger and, and younger community base here in Lathrow Village, and the equities that are being held by older individuals compared to younger individuals is quite different. Older individuals sway more towards stocks and ETFs where younger individuals sway more towards cryptocurrency. So it is something that is only become more of an issue and become more to the forefront as millennials and Gen Z get older.
Which is also a reason why you can't really prohibit.
Exactly, yeah, as well.
You shouldn't be prohibiting because you want to provide mechanisms for legitimate use of those resources and assets.
And just like, there's other examples of, of things that are, have legitimate, legitimate uses, but are also very susceptible to scammers and those who have ill intent.
I did want to lay on top of something that Joe said about the, you know, ATM kiosks that can also be utilized for cryptocurrency kiosks. So we have ATMs in the city today, but we are not requiring registration of those today. So I think whatever, if we consider ordinance language to recommend for approval by the city council, probably gonna need to consider potentially requiring registration of standalone ATMs that are not necessarily crypto kiosks, just because there's a potential that it could be, come both a traditional ATM and a crypto kiosk.
Dual-use kiosk.
Or virtual currency kiosks, as it's referred to in the memo, which is, I think, a good, accurate, and all-encompassing description. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, I guess the, the action item will be to look into getting some proposed draft ordinance language around this that we can review for the August meeting, is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think we, you know, we could obviously take what Gross Point Farms says down, share that with you, and use it as a kind of a template to potentially provide something to city council for their consideration.
Okay, great. And I'll make sure that the city council knows the planning commission updates during the next council meeting, that this is something that we're looking at on the planning commission? Great, okay, thanks. Okay, next item is item eight, other matters for discussion, standards for proposed solar installation ordinance.
So this is an item that we've been speaking and discussing about for the last few meetings, and the previous two discussions were more 30,000-foot view. We were trying to get the intent of what aspects of solar panels and battery systems we wanted to regulate, and we didn't want to have it over-regulated where it almost deterred people from going and installing these type of systems, but provided a framework for people to follow and a process for how we could make sure these systems are installed safely and also maintained safely because they are actually, they're chemical reactions that are occurring constantly, even if they are decommissioned. So what we did last week, we sat down, we took the feedback from the last two meetings, and we condensed it down into the language and format that we use in our zoning ordinances, which is the clear zoning formatting, and that is what you were provided. So this would become Article 5.17, Solar and Battery Energy Systems. So this is intended to be a introduction to what will be presented next month, because last month we voted to have a public hearing in August for this item. So Tom is here to briefly go over what we have drafted and what changes and what intent the ordinance is going to pursue.
Thank you, Austin. Hello, everyone. So if you remember the last two meetings that we were at, Joe will know that you weren't present for these, but I'll give you a brief rundown. We had back in May about an hour and a half conversation, if I'm not mistaken, that went to a lot of detail and got into a lot of depth regarding the first draft of the ordinance. Going back into June, we had a lot more discussion, wasn't nearly that long, but there were some, some cursory things that got away from us from the May meeting that we followed up on. In this ordinance, we've, from the second iteration of it back in June to now, we have cut it back by about 10 pages. It was at about 18, 19 pages, now we've dialed it back to eight. A lot of the, what we've removed from this were straight-up redundancies that were in national electrical code, Michigan building code, things that realistically are cited and quoted somewhere else. In this instance, we don't need it here because we cite in the ordinance that we're pulling it from this, we're referencing this, we don't need it quoted here. So we've removed a ton of redundancies. The first two pages of the ordinance now, or I guess page and have, are definition. We've maintained a lot of our definitions for what we're going to need, and we have kept that intact. General provisions, for the most part, has been wildly changed. We are still allowing solar energy systems and battery energy storage systems, SES and BES. We are allowing those for rooftop systems. From our last meeting, there was a lot of contention, and back in May too, there was a lot of contention about ground mount, both residential and commercial. We've removed that entirely. From the May, from the June meeting, there seemed to be a lot of contention about allowing that, so we just said no. We're not going to allow it on either commercial or residential. We are leaving ourselves open for if a, like, DTE or consumers come by and they want to take an open lot and use it as principal use, commercial. We are leaving ourselves open to allow that, but that would require an amendment to the ordinance, so that's just a future note for future reference. Let's see, permit the systems, cover the, my apologies. So struc, safety and structural standards, I did talk with the Southfield Fire Marshal. I have been talking with other area fire marshals, ones that I know personally, they had given me a lot of recommendations for this, but the Southfield Fire Marshal liked what we had for our safety standards. Mr. Nordmo, you had brought up the three-foot line on either side of the roof peak. They liked your comments, but they also liked having the roof on the roof. One of the big things that they wanted though was a, it's, it's a special conduit that goes into the battery and into the panels themselves. They allow the panels to operate continuously and individually. So if one panel shuts down for whatever reason, whether it's damage or it's a power outage or, or something happens to it, that will shut down, but the others will still work. They wanted that specifically, it is a fire risk to not have that, so that was something that they specifically wanted to see cited, that is in the ordinance under the safety and structural standards.
Which page is that?
That should be under 5.17.5.
Great, thanks.
I'm not sure what page that is, I'm sorry.
I got it, I got it, thank you.
As Austin said, we did keep a lot of our decommissioning and repowering. This one has been scaled back substantially down to, I think, only one or two pages. We, a lot of what we had that we've kept were recommendations from the University of Michigan, again, we had the Graham Institute, we reached out to them and asked them for their feedback on the ordinance. The things that we've kept The things that we've kept in decommissioning and repowering were straight from them. So those were the biggest changes that we've seen. This is the ordinance as it stands. Baker has been kind of advising us, I was about to say abiding, but no, advising us as we've gone about this process to get us squared away. And we, this is what we're going to be voting on in the next month unless there's some language changes that you all recommend or if there's something else that you want to see added or taken away. This is basically what we're shooting for, for next month. So from that, I know that last month I said I was going to try and get it to you guys earlier in the month. Things unfortunately came up, so I wasn't able to work on this nearly as fast as I wanted to. Fortunately, the holiday did kind of scale us back for things that we wanted to do. But this is what we have now and I'm going to leave the floor open to you all for any further discussion that you have or any further questions that you have.
Also, if there's anything in the language in between now and next month that you either agree with, don't agree with, or would like to have added, please let us know. So that when we bring it to you all next month, we have a, an ordinance language that is ready to be voted upon during the public hearing.
He's taken out the reference to ground mounted systems. No, we discussed it a lot. I wasn't aware that we were presenting consensus to take it out. Just be interested in how the rest of you feel about that.
I think during the last meeting personally, I expressed the interest in removing that. And primarily around things like, you know, the height of these things that are mounted in the ground compared to the height of accessory buildings, which we've had to adjust our ordinances around already. Safety, right? If they're mounted too low, then people or machines or things like that could potentially run into them or cause damage. Those are just the reasons that I had, why I didn't, I didn't think it was necessary, I guess, also that to have, you know, I think most of the buildings that are in residences and homes that are in the city could support a solar panel system mounted either on the house or on an accessory building. There's probably some exceptions to that, but I think the vast majority of them can do that.
Specifically, I think I used the language that panels installed to the roof seemed like a reasonable accommodation or alternative to ground mounted.
To the road?
To the roof.
But it was facing the road.
Front facing. We had a discussion around front facing.
Street face side.
Right.
The street facing.
That's right.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Lost my train of thought.
I took you totally.
That's okay.
But yeah, you're talking about the compromise.
I think it was of my opinion that roof mounted systems was a reasonable and more common alternative to the ground mounted systems. However, Commissioner Nordmo, I'd be very interested to know more of your thoughts on this because I had the pleasure recently of attending a meeting at your home, which is an ecological wonder. I think you told me your DT bill was a dollar something
Yeah.
In the previous month. So do you have strong feelings about leaving ground mounted systems and or removing them?
One of the touchy things in decision making about when, whether and when to put a solar system onto your property has to do with the condition of the roof under it and whether you have to remove the panels at some point and put them back after replacement of the roof. And if a home has a very large yard, like for example, the house across the street from us has, seems like a half an acre empty. Plenty of room for, for just a ground mounted system and having it, having vision of it secured by landscaping. So I can see some places where this might be very appropriate. I also understand, you know, we don't have sheep to mow around, you know. So you got to get in and under with your landscaping equipment and it has to be safe for children and we may want to climb on the damn thing. So so I'm, I really don't have an opinion on it, just some thoughts. I would like to raise another issue before we're done with that. I understand there's been some scamming around these kinds of installations as well. And I thought that maybe in the permitting process, the city would be able to screen for that or advise about it. I don't know personally the details of these situations, but I understand there are companies that advertise that you don't have to put any money out, let's just come and install it. You won't own it, but you won't, you know, there's nothing but gravy in it for you.
Yeah, Tom, Tom mentioned this during our last meeting and he's got his hand up, so I know he's got some.
So I would think that there would be maybe some, some standard literature that would be available, some assurance that when people do apply for a permit that if they're getting into one of those situations, there might be a chance to help them out or head it off.
Yeah.
So to that point, I'm actually in the process of making a frequently asked questions page that people can download. It'll be right from our website. It's obviously not done yet, but once we get this passed, I will have this finished and finalized. People can download it. It'll have everything that they'll need to know about, you know, your installers, what you should know about getting solar panels in the first place. And to your point about the permitting process, we do have it that you have to be, in order to pull a permit, you have to have a Michigan electrical license. So we are ahead of that and trying to stay ahead of that, that ball, as it were.
It's not, somebody could have a Michigan electrical license and still be a scammer.
They absolutely could, but.
Just less likely.
Yes. Yes, precisely. And, and if, if that is the case, there are ways for us to track them through the state. We can call up the, the state electrical, you know, whoever's in charge of that up there and say, hey, this person, we think are a scammer. Can you help us? And we'll have them on our side.
Could there be a step in the permitting process that requires somebody, maybe the staff or city staff or maybe the applicant, the homeowner, or maybe even the contractor that they hired to present some sort of certification or indemnity insurance or
Yeah, absolutely.
Something like that, license and bonding and things like that.
Absolutely. There could be. We'd be working with our co enforcement officer to, to make that permit to begin with. So we can absolutely put that in. Either whether it's a homeowner providing proof of insurance or it's the contractor providing proof of insurance. We can.
Yeah, so that, and that wouldn't necessarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but that wouldn't necessarily be part of the ordinance. It would be part of the process for getting permitted to do the installation.
Yeah, that could be, that could be implemented in the permitting process. My understanding of some of these scams that Tom probably knows a lot more about, but I think some of these companies that are promising you the moon and the stars, they're, you know, they take your money and they're not going to show up at city hall to pull a permit. So I don't know how
That's a good point.
Effective we will be at thwarting the scam. It may have already taken place by the time the city gets involved, but I think the frequently asked questions page, and again, just like we discussed earlier, the more awareness that we can spread to residents looking into these systems to make sure they find a reputable local contractor, that I think will go a long way to eliminating some of those potential pitfalls.
Good point.
I'm more than likely going to be reaching back out to the University of Michigan. I also might reach out to the MSU Extension School since they're the two institutions who wrote the book for Eagle. I might be asking them for help in, in making the FAQ page. It's not just going to be me on this. I'm going to get some actual professionals in the field, people who know what they're talking about to really kind of shore this up.
And luckily we had such great communication with the University of Michigan and as you saw in the previous versions, we had so much content, so much text. We have a lot to go off of to make these, this FAQ.
I had a, two short things. So one is you mentioned during your introduction, the, this conduit to prevent fires in case a panel fails. And I struggle to find the language in the section you, you mentioned.
It's a reference to micro inverters, I believe.
Yes, micro inverters. That's it. Thank you.
And that's 5.17.3.4.
Oh, it's the general provision, it's not in the CTE.
Yes. My apologies.
How many kilowatts do these inverters have to be?
You know what? He did mention that in his email and I completely forgot to add that. I will add that tonight for the.
And then section five dot seventeen dot six dot three, aesthetic and visual integrity. Are you there?
Yes.
Item three refers to ground mounted systems and so its boot can be removed.
Yeah. Good catch.
Those are the two things I had.
Thank you.
I will say the last point for this agenda item, we, during our research, we found a interesting amount of wall mounted systems and how they bring them into the architectural layout of a facade of a building and is very interesting. I think that's going to be a very interesting component to architecture as we move forward and it's going to be some, a space you should keep an eye on. It's going to be fun.
Is that mostly within your research with new construction?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's mostly with new construction. We did find ones that were interestingly enough on attached to like the side of a home that you could actually bring out and
Like a sun shade.
Yeah, exactly. And it, I, I looked at it and I thought the moment I get a house, I'm getting that. Because it's, it's not nearly as big as an actual like rooftop solar panel, but it is small enough that you can move it with ease and it's pretty out of the way, actually.
So based on the current ordinance, would those be allowed or not?
No, because it says it must be flushed to the wall.
Flushed.
We would have to put in there, it could be a certain amount of inches out from the building.
There are also kits for patio installations.
Yes.
I'm afraid I've mispronounced the word.
I don't know how to pronounce it. I don't know.
Pergola.
Yes.
There are kits for that and there are also, of course, which you do make reference to, carport
Yep.
Versions, which normally wouldn't be, have any relevance for our houses, but for business or apartment locations, or for example, if we have townhouses in the future, which may or may not have garages, well, why not that kind of an installation, which is will also keep the, maybe keep some of the ice off your car in the winter and shade it in the summer. And it's less expensive than a garage.
Yeah.
But would generate a lot of power.
And that, that was something that during our, our amendments last week, we considered that if we can't have commercial use solar panels, we could use these solar carports instead. That might be a good kind of middleman if we can find a way to, you know, bridge this divide. So I, we, we ended up, we ended up keeping the, the carports in. And I, I think that for both resident and commercial, whatever, you know, if, if it's a an apartment complex in the future, if it's townhouses in the future, if it's, you know, one of the businesses across the street that want to have them, you know, who, who's to say no? So.
Just a matter of placement again, aesthetics.
Yep. But we've, we've taken those aesthetics into consideration with the, the historic district standards. And a lot of our businesses are in a historic district, so they would have to abide by very specific standards per that ordinance.
These are some of the advantages that I was referring to for a ground mounted system, that you don't have to worry about shingles underneath. There won't be, they are the shingles.
So have you done any, any studies? So I, I travel and, and going into Las Vegas, I had a trucking company. But going into Las Vegas, there is this solar farm.
Yes.
And the emissions that are coming off that, those panels that are out there, are there any studies to say whether those emissions are, or those rays or what, whatever that energy is, whether or not it's harmful or dangerous to say, for instance, the residents, wildlife or anything of that nature?
There might be. I'm not going to say yes or no because admittedly I haven't done the research on that. Usually solar farms like that are on a bigger side that we just cannot have in the city to begin with.
Right.
Just because we don't have the size of it. I will say I live out in, near Wixom and on ninety six, as you're going out that way, there is a ma- not a massive one, but a pretty sizable solar farm on the northern side of ninety six. I haven't noted any issues on my end, but I, I could do research if it would, if it would, you know, put your mind at ease for this and I can report on that next month.
And, and I'm thinking of these panels and, and don't get me wrong, I think that solar panels are a good idea because it does save a ton of money. But I'm thinking of the solar panels, the same way those, those power cords on Eight Mile going all the way down, you know what I'm saying? And the emissions there and what are the, what's the impact?
I can look into that a little bit more and I can have that presented next month if you, if you so desire.
Sounds good.
And we do have several homes, including Dennis's home, that have solar panels. It'd be interesting, you know, it's not scientific, but like if you've had solar panels installed on your home for ten years, like have you noticed any like dead foliage?
Nothing whatsoever.
Any dead animals?
No.
You know, things that would be in the, you know, blast radius, quote unquote.
Full of nature, full of natural life. See several species at, at a time.
Yeah. So, but it would be good to get scientific information as well, but it seems like, you know, the people that are building the panels, that built them in such a way that they don't cause harm to things that are around them.
Where they're really, I mean, the case, the ecological case for them is on the other foot in that the alternative are the emissions that come out of our chimneys and our tailpipes and our smoke stacks in relation to the current power system. This is an alternative to that.
And from our research, the biggest health hazard would be having it in the basement, the battery system and having a fire due to the length of time it takes for it to be extinguished.
Yes.
And also the potential of it re-emitting, catching fire again. So that was, Joe, just so you're aware, that was one item is we're not going to allow them in the basement.
Gotcha. Okay. That's good to know.
That's also why we added the inspection component to it because our, our understanding is that when these are, are damaged by hail or branches or something else, then they do have a potential to have an environmental impact. And so that's why the city, it's important to have biannual inspections of these, making sure that they're not damaged, that they're functioning properly.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Any other comments or questions?
Nothing other than intern Kennedy, you've put a lot of work into this. You've had many, many long conversations about it. And I hope you don't think we've put you through the rire. I actually think it's a good thing because you've given us so much to digest and it's a lot to chew. So thank you for working so hard on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've done a great job, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
We'll move on to item nine on the agenda, general communications and the site development update report.
Thank you, Jason. Site development report will begin with two seven three zero zero, Southfield Road, which is just to the south of us here at city hall. Plan commission approved interior and exterior build out last February, February twenty twenty four. Approved site plan permitted at the time, retail and personal care for the remaining units in addition to the laundromat that was approved. Approved site plan permitted at the time, retail and personal care for the remaining units in addition to the laundromat that was approved in the south unit. The accounting firm that occupied, uh, for many years now, in the northern unit, will remain, while, uh, the two additional units that now occupy that plaza, which will be occupied by a nail salon and a smoke shop, are currently going through, uh, interior buildout. The signage for most of these have also been, uh, put up, so you can see that that property is coming along quite well.
Is there a decision about the, the wall on the alley? We had said there was supposed to be some form of barrier.
Oh, yes, that is, uh, we have been in communication with the property owner, and they are currently working with a contractor to have that, uh, installed. They did also have the, uh, back part, uh, if you recall, the alleyway was a two-way, it's now a one-way, there will be parking along that eastwardly wall that has been repaved, and then also there was some, um, mainline sewage, uh, disruption that required cutting into the alleyway and having it replaced, that has also been completed, so they're getting ready to do striping of the new parking spots. So it'll be nice to have additional parking in the Village Center. For two six six zero zero, Southfield Road, this is the new, uh, flagship store for Holbrook Auto Parts. They have been, uh, very diligent in their exterior buildout, they're continuing wrapping up the interior, the exterior, you can see, is almost complete. I think it's coming out quite well, actually, it's all brick, and, um, the metal that we were concerned about has, uh, is limited, but it does feature and is a nice contrast to the stone that will, is now on the plaza. Two seven seven zero zero, Southfield Road, our former high school to the north, received historical district commission approval, um, this past February. A public hearing was held for the site plan in April, and was approved, and currently, they are working with Michigan Economic Development Corporation on funding, and that funding is contingent on a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes ordinance, that will be on City Council's agenda. And also, that does not mean that they, their application is approved, it just means that the city will begin accepting applications for any developer who is interested in receiving a pilot for development. At two eight three one seven, Southfield Road, to the north of us, uh, the golf simulator business was able to get their equipment out of, uh, out of Bondit Warehouse due to tariffs in Atlanta, and they've been installed, I actually went out there, not this last Friday, but the Friday prior, with our code enforcement to do an inspection, it looks great inside, the property owner, the building owner is very excited, he's actually going to be renting, uh, two booths at the Lethir Village Music Festival, and he's gonna have a little putting contest, so, um, come on out on September thirteenth, and, uh, drop by Lante's, uh, booth, which is Mara Green's, golfing, and they, if you miss on your putt, you still get the ball, that says Mara Greens on it, and if you make it, you're gonna get, um, a little time in the simulator, so. There's three of them, it looks great in there, really excited for them, they're doing a wonderful job. Uh, two six seven one zero, Southfield Road, the applicant requested approval for mixed use, converting, uh, the existing personal services to retail. Pro's use, uh, was approved, these is, this is the pre-made meal business, that is, uh, just south of, uh, s- uh, six ninety-six on the east side. They are currently doing interior work, their signage has been posted, so the new wall sign is up. And lastly, at two eight three zero nine, which is right next to the golf simulator, is an existing, uh, business that has relocated within, uh, the city, it is a spa, and they are currently in the process of getting their signage finalized, I reviewed it, uh, last week, there was some tweaking that needed to be done, they're in the process of working with their contractor to get that finalized, and then we will approve it, and then the interior buildout, um, which doesn't require much work, it has begun. And, Jason, that's all I have for you this month.
Great.
Question.
Thanks, Austin.
Did you say you reviewed the sign?
Mm-hmm.
So, in the sign review process, uh, does this happen with every business?
Yes, every, every business, um, I usually do a pre-development, uh, meeting with them to discuss what is permitted, provide them with the.
Did you, do you ever correct the grammar, or?
I, I do, but it doesn't mean they listen.
Okay, and, um, sometimes the colors are rather jarring.
Um, unfortunately, the ordinance does not permit regula- regulation of the coloring, only thing is, actually, the halo lighting, that has become more popular, that can be regulated, it can only be white, and it can only extend a certain amount from the, uh, wall sign itself.
The City Council's been talking during study sessions about, uh, window-mounted signs, that we're seeing more and more prevalence of along the Southfield corridor, Southfield Road corridor, but we haven't really been having any discussions about wa- wall-mounted business name signs.
Also, City Council provided a, um, an ease to our ban on feather and flutter signs for the businesses, uh, south of, uh, six ninety-six, for, uh, the, until the end of road construction or until, uh, August thirty-first. They have been really hurting, and I would recommend anybody who is in need of a coffee or in need of lunch, stop on by and, and visit one of the businesses there, they would love to have you.
Yeah.
And you can also see some of Bruce's great photography, they have big.
It's gone, it's not there anymore.
Sold out?
But I talked to a couple of business owners on that strip, and they're really appreciative that we, uh, offered that, uh, temporary approval of feathered signs.
That's great to hear.
Yeah.
I do have a few things, if I might, um, first, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Robinson to the table. You really hit the ground running tonight with a lot of in-depth questioning and commentary, so I appreciate that. To Ms. Anderson's, uh, points earlier tonight, um, uh, she spoke often about, she has spoken often about expanding the historic district. And similar to, um, Commissioner Scusell, his question earlier on a different topic, I'm curious to know, if the city were to expand the historic district, which body or bodies would that expansion flow through, is that a matter for this body to discuss, City Council to discuss, the Historic District Commission to discuss? Some combination thereof, curious, if anyone knows.
I believe it's a combination of the Historic District Commission and the City Council.
Because the final approval would be beyond the city for, then, can the district be expanded by the city itself?
The city, yeah, the city has the ability to establish and, and include properties into the district, which it has previously done.
Okay.
So, I, I'll double check on it, but I think that's the start, set the Historic District Commission, and then it gets approved by City Council.
Sure, I admit, I don't know a lot about what that expansion means, I'd be very curious to learn more. I know, however, for example, I have many friends that live in the Boston Edison, Arden Park Historic District. And to my knowledge, our historic district only includes buildings in which people don't reside, um, and of course, if there's some benefit, meaning, the historic district, or maybe I'm conflating the historic district and the Village Center, I'm thinking of this building, the church, and, uh, the school. Are there more buildings in our historic district?
I believe the ta- Old Town Hall used to be.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a differentiation between historic district and historically designated properties.
Sure.
And I'm sure Ms. Anderson probably has this answer on the tip of her tongue, uh, my understanding is that the entire city is part of a district, but there's only a limited, uh, there were only three properties that were actually added to the properties that were designated as historic buildings, one, one being the school, this building, and the former town hall.
Sure, well.
In nineteen ninety-eight, when they established the district, it had to be fifty years old, most of Lethir, it did that, then, now it doesn't.
Well, uh, certainly, and especially if there's some benefits to businesses that occupy old buildings, or residents that occupy old homes, I live in one built in nineteen forty-one, I would be very curious to learn more about what expanding the historic district might mean for the city of Lethir Village. And I'd be happy to look at those properties with you on a Sunday, uh, whenever that works. Two other things, uh, Commissioner Hammond and I actually haven't discussed this, but I've noticed for the past two meetings, you and I have both voted against the excusal, if that's a word, of, of absent commissioners. I'll clarify why I've done that. I'm actually not sure if, uh, if, um, Commissioner Disick or, uh, Chairman Stansbury excused their absences today by way of notifying.
Yes.
You, Austin, okay, uh, so, in those instances, I would be inclined to vote yes on excusing the absence, but I also know that over the course of my tenure on this commission, there's been many instances where commissioners have not notified, uh, the city of their absence. So I think in advance of voting on, uh, the excuse of absent commissioners, I would prefer to know who has or who hasn't notified the city properly of, uh, of their absence.
And there is a record cap of that, and it is tracked as the week, uh, goes on, to see who RSVPs and who does not.
Sure.
Yeah, I, well, I, I agree with you, and this has also been a problem on City Council historically, of people not appearing at meetings and not notifying either the city administrator or somebody on City Council that they intend to be absent, right? So, I think that the challenge is, yeah, you have a record of it, Austin, but if people on this commission aren't aware that you've been notified, then we don't have the information we need to.
You can provide briefing at the beginning of, uh, meetings.
Yeah, we can just talk about it before the meeting, whoever's gonna be chairing the meeting, whether it's Chair Stansbury or anybody else, can, can distribute that information to the rest of the commissioners before we begin the meeting.
Sure.
Then we all know, yeah.
That would be helpful for me.
Absolutely.
Last, and most uncomfortably for me, at our last meeting, Carol Grain presented a letter that she and others drafted about, um, this commission's approval of the site plan for, uh, Annie Lethir School Building. My first question is, uh, I only know, I think all of us only know, we received this letter because Carol presented it at the meeting. I'm curious if we would have known otherwise, and if there's a mechanism to deliver these types of correspondence to the commission, even if the person isn't presenting them formally, as you did.
That is something we can, we can definitely pursue, and the, uh, the perks from the letter itself was a, uh, incorrect reference in the zoning ordinance, the intent was there, and the applicant did provide adequate information, and the planning commission at the time did have the option to require that the applicant get a shared parking agreement. Even the owner of the lot with where the shared parking agreement, um, would have been, spoke during public comment, during our April planning commission meeting, and planning commission members had the opportunity to require that parking agreement, but, um, this body chose not to. So, um, the intent for that section of the ordinance was followed through, and the intent was taken all the way to this body. It's just, in the staff report that was provided, there was an incorrect reference in the ordinance, the, uh, result would not have been different, it was just that section was not the correct one, and it was something we had discussed in previous, uh, pre-development meetings, it was just when the staff report was finalized, the incorrect section was inputted.
Sure, uh, in addition to her letter, uh, she also provided us the city's response to her letter, as well as a response to the response that the city offered to her, I'm curious to know if the city has responded to the response.
No, the city has not responded to the response.
Okay. I promise I'm almost done, uh, to what extent should the planning commission be involved in the drafting of those responses? Especially if perhaps we don't agree with the entirety of the response?
That is something that can be discussed, but the decision was made, a legal decision was made in April regarding the site plan, and all of the information that was required to make a decision had been presented to the body, and everything that was, all mechanisms to make a decision on the night of the meeting were there to the commissioners, and, um, I think the city followed through as it should have, and also, uh, going forward, we can have discussions when there are those types of communications from residents.
Sure, um, to be clear, I don't think the commission made a decision, a decision it should requir- it should regret based on a misreading or a misdirection within the ordinance, I happen to agree that we ultimately made a decision about parking, for example, that is sound, based on a different part of the ordinance, um, but as I, you and I already discussed in email, I do think we spent a lot of time talking about a section of the ordinance that doesn't actually apply, because it is specific to non-residential, um, properties, and of course, this apartment complex will very much be a residential property, so I agree that our bases were covered. I, just for what it's worth, don't love the part of the response that describes, um, what I believe was a misdirection within the ordinance for us to review and discuss as a typographical error, I don't think it was as simple as a keystroke error, I think, uh, I think we were directed to the wrong part of the ordinance, um, now, that doesn't exempt me, I won't speak for anybody else, that doesn't exempt me from being more diligent about coming up with the same ideas that Carol and those who wrote this letter with her came up with, of course, I have, um, obligation in that, but I'm saying this to say that, uh, had I had, had I personally had input in the response, I wouldn't have described it as a typographic error, because I do think it was simply an error, which we're entitled to, um, and I feel good about the decision we made, I just don't want to, I don't want Carol or anybody else to feel like we're kind of brushing over, um, a mistake by categorizing it as something it wasn't, so.
It was word choice, I don't think it was any ill-intent or any, uh, misdeception, it was, uh, notifying that the applicant had the opportunity to bring in additional information and present it to this body, they had, and they also went and made the steps all the way to draft an agreement and have it ready to go in place, right up until the point where it was up to the body, uh, the planning commission to decide if they were gonna require a parking agreement, and as I said, the owner of the property was more than willing to allow it. But, uh, yeah, I, word choice may have been a little, um, I don't regret it, but it was, uh, an honest response, and I also believe that all the information needed to make a decision based off the section of the ordinance that was utilized and discussed in pre-development meetings was there, and it was up to this body to decide if there was gonna be a requirement for a parking agreement or not.
Sure, and I don't question, uh, the intention, that's not why I'm saying what I'm saying, uh, I'm simply, uh, stating that had I had a hand in the response, I think I would have suggested a different word choice, um, but, of course, we, we didn't have an opportunity to participate in response, so that's perhaps a bit of what I'm advocating for.
Okay, appreciate it, Commissioner Helen.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Tim, you good?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
And does anybody else have any general correspondence they'd like to bring?
Oh, in reference to the, uh, the historic structure built in nineteen forty-one, uh, I'd like to point out, that was built in nineteen forty, and do I get a historic designation?
It is an interesting idea, cause right now, our historic district is only in commercial, there is not residential, and Detroit has done a fantastic job with Boston Edison, with, uh, Indian Village, and, um, other sections.
And we do have homes that are part of the historic registry of the United States, but that's not the same thing as being designated in the historic district.
I believe mine might be, because I have a plaque that says nineteen forty on it, and I did install it, but the previous owner put it very close to my address, so good luck knowing if I'm eighteen seven oh one or nineteen forty-one, those numbers are immediately next to each other, anyway, I digress.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll second.
So, we've been seconded, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody. So we've been seconded. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.